Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, the August 13th workshop, 2014. Uh, thanks, thank you for the great crowd again today. Uh, I'd like to invite Mr. John Betts up. Uh, I know he's got Brad Brillo and I didn't know the other young man with you. Come on up and have a seat. They're gonna talk a little bit about asphalt sealing and...
You can move that a little closer to you, John.
And this was important for me, uh, just to give the board a little bit of, uh, history on, on, uh, why this kinda came up and the timing couldn't have been better when I ran into John. We have a, we do a lot of patching throughout the course of the town. And at times, uh, from a visual, you'll see that we'll have patch over patch over patch over patch over patch. And, and kinda my thoughts were, why don't we seal, I'm probably the worst one in the world to seal the driveway. I don't think I've done it, but why don't we seal our roads in the town of Elkton? Would it give us extended life on our, on our, on our driveways or, not on our driveways, on our paving? Uh, so you're gonna kinda educate us a little bit, but that was kinda the groundwork.
Yeah, and I'm not an expert by any chance. My name is John Betts. I live at 22 MacArthur Lane in Patriots Glen Development. Everybody knows where that's at. And, uh, just a citizen, uh, of the community and of Elkton. Um, I know Brad, uh, he's with Aspen Properties who manages all the maintenance of the properties there.
And Brad Brillo.
Jeff.
Jeff, what's your last name?
Stanley.
Stanley, alright, very good.
He's with S&amp;M Paving.
Very good.
After we had a conversation, I said, "Let me, let me take a look at this and let me try to find out what the applications are, some ideas." And I called some of, and I'm with York Building Products, it's a company I work for. And indirectly, we do deal with asphalt companies. We sell to the people that make the asphalt. These guys buy the asphalt of that company and they spread it out in the streets. So I have a general knowledge and that's about it. Uh, there's no too much to be dangerous with it. But I called up several people that we sell that asphalt to and they said, "S&amp;M Paving is the guy you wanna talk to." They're the experts in the area. They've done several applications, different applications. And it's probably a good start to get any kind of expert question. So hopefully Jeff can, can offer some, uh, some technical evidence here.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so, uh, it's just an idea. Um, some of the people I deal with, like I said, I would deal in the asphalt world. They're sealing roads and why did they do that? There's two reasons. One is aesthetically. You know, you want, you, just let, I think Commissioner Heinrich ask to buy your house. I think you've sealed your driveway there. It's aesthetically pleasing, but it also seals, uh, the, um, the pavement. And it's a cost saver in the long run. It's as simple as that. And so, you know, after we talked, we said, "Let's get a date and let's sit down and do something." I'm gonna hand out a little bit here, just, uh, I don't know how I have enough, but here it is. I'm not gonna read all this because I wanna bore you. What, maybe if you let me, we're, this is a very brief thing put out by, just to be, uh...
A little more there.
Be a little bit more here. The Federal Highway Administration. You know, early, have a...
Yeah, we're good.
Um, it's pretty much saying in this, this paragraph right here, "Save is pay now or pay later." The second paragraph, uh, is probably where you wanna focus. Typically, pavements perform well under loads until a particular point in their lifespan, at which time they deteriorate precipitously and rapidly to failure. Experience shows that spending $1 on pavement preservation before the point of elimination, or eliminates, excuse me, or delays spending $6 to $10 in the future. That's what it's all about. If you seal it now, take care of some of these problems, you, you're not paying down the road. Now, I've driven through Elkton, there's roads that are worse. But focusing on where I live, I know it's a main thoroughfare. 300 homes there. Probably everybody in the home, you know, uh, two spouses are working. And they, they're passing through the one lane. There's only one lane in and out. And so there's a lot of traffic on that main road. A proposal or an idea is, "Seal that one road. Patch it, seal it." Because now, all they see is just a series of patchwork. And the seams are getting wider. Every time you seam, and hop in if you, you agree, uh, and we all ride on that asphalt. And as soon as you seam something, heat and cold will move that around. And the more seams, the more cracks, the more voids. And when it gets to the bottom layer, the base course they call that, water gets in there during the winter, freezes, it cracks, now's the big problem. I, uh, took pictures going down my street. My neighbors think I was nuts out there. I don't know who they thought I was. You know how these things work, right? We're just gonna turn that around. Commissioner Blonsky, you wanna see that first? And just rip through, there's six of them I think I, I took there, just while we're talking. So, um, I, uh, there's, there's several applications. Brad and I talked about several of them. I'm not the expert. Um, I think S&amp;M maybe could provide some ideas on what to do. Maybe the most, or the least expensive is something called sealing. You just put a, just a simple seal, like a lot of people do in their driveways. Uh, you have to fill in those cracks first, but, but seal over that. I got a, it's a rough estimate that was done by, uh, people within his organization, the estimators. And that estimate, doing, now, let me see if I can find the square footage of this here. Should've had it right here in front of me, apologize. Was $18,000 for the main road. And how many square feet that is, I couldn't tell you. But that's a start. But there's other applications. And this is a workshop. I don't know if it's a technical workshop because I don't have those answers. But I think it's something the town should look into. And maybe if it focuses on something that, yeah, this is a good example down here at Patriots Glen. It's gonna, the road's gonna deteriorate in, in, in probably a couple of years because they said the length is 10 years. Brad, can you help me out? How, how long has that main road been in there? How many times have they patched that?
Since at least 2000, probably 2001.
Yeah.
2001.
So it's in that lifespan.
Brad, uh, it, you manage how many homes at Aspen? Do homeowners associations?
We, we have about 8,000.
Is other neighborhoods sealing?
Yes. When, when we got private roads, we'll do, like, um, the town, the townhomes communities, for example, will seal, um, parking spaces to try to get our longevity. We own parking spaces. Usually the municipalities or towns or counties own the roads. But when we were talking about this, it was an interesting idea because I, I do know of other counties. Anarundel County does them. Um, Queen Anne's does some, some seal coating, paving. They do, uh, some other techniques of, they call it cape sealing. There's some, some real interesting alternatives to try to expand the life, like, the life expectancy of the road without doing the major, you know, milling, bringing in the milling operation and repaving it. It might be something if you're proactive enough to, to get in front of, it could save you in the long run. That, that was something that we see and we do. We do some slurry sealing. We do some stuff like that when we have some major repairs. At the end of the day, you'll still have to do some, some asphalt repairs. But you wanna make sure the integrity's there and then you seal them. And then overs, you know, you seal coat them, they'll give you a longer life.
And Fred, with your experience, you have to, you have to...
Jeff.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Uh, the, uh, uh, you have to, those cracks get sealed in first.
Right.
And then you put the seal coat over.
Right.
Uh, I, I know when, when, when you do driveways, of course, I've seen guys come out and spray the driveway and/or roll it on, but now I...
We've just got all sprays.
Is it, is it, in like in a truck that kinda sprays it like a...
No, we got...
Would it be a hand spray?
It's in a tank and it's got a sprayer on the end. You know, always one man sprays it, just like a, like your paint and drug, you don't...
Okay.
Is it a, is it a spray?
It's a cold, uh, emis, uh, emulsion. Cold emulsion and it's got sand in it, it's not slick.
Okay.
And how long does a slurrant last on the road? Cause I know a friend of mine does his driveway every...
Probably every other year.
Every other year.
Yeah.
Some of the other techniques though, if you have, if you have, uh, tech, if you use a different technique, like a slurry mix that has emulsifiers with larger, um, aggregate in it. So, you know, they do some things where you'll have some, you'll see them in, on county roads sometimes. They'll do tar and chip, right? They lay, they put some tar down, you put some chips over it and then you run over it and it's, it feels like a dirt road for a couple of weeks until the heat, uh, buries that stuff. There's other techniques where, like, the cape sealing that I was talking about would be, um, where they do the tar and chip and then they seal it with a slurry that bonds that so it looks like a road, a before and after. It just gives you a little more depth on your road. Those ones, um, from what I asked, I did a little bit of research. They do that every seven to 10 years. So it, it could expand it a little more. Now, you'd have, we would have to, or you would have to, um, get somebody in here to give you, you know, the real technical aspect of it. But there are other things you can do, you know, there, to, like at Patriots Glen, I know, cause we manage that one, I'm in there quite a bit. When the road was turned over and, and the final paving, paving was on, there were some patches that needed to be done after the fact. So there was kind of that piecemeal patch. And, and you know, some homeowners have mentioned the way that that looks. So what this would do is essentially, we would wanna look at it and if you use that as an example, you would come in and seal all that, reseal that, fill the cracks, blow all the cracks out of, of that and then use whatever emulsifying, that thing you wanna do. You know, their, their, their product is a year or two. There's other stuff that could get you potentially seven to 10. And there's probably something in between there that would be cheaper. You know, I know that, you know, you could also do an overlay. If you do, uh, an overlay where you have an inch and a half that goes over the top rather than mill and remove, the expense of remove and replace, you can come in and have someone go right down the curb line with, you know, a, a miller, go a couple inches down and then do an overlay. It would just increase to the crown, you know, and those, those costs, you know, to, this, it just really depends on your plan of attack. And those costs probably range anywhere between, you know, a dollar a square yard or to $4.55 a square yard. But I think if you're going to mill, replace and, you know, remove and replace that, now you're talking about subgrade issues that you could deal, potentially deal with. I think if you're just gonna, in what we were thinking about, you're, yeah, you're just looking at, at extending the life of...
I think, is that your, is that your back there?
Tom?
Yeah. You oughta come up, Tom, or?
I'm good, if you have it. Just wanna make, I'm gonna make a comment. By sealing the, uh, the, the road, and I know one of the reasons why, there was trying to beautify the, the location. And I know when we patched certain areas, you had the grade and you had the dark and then where the stones were put in. And I know that's a good thing, just to seal that, to make it look good. I understand that one to two years you have to do it again, but I, I would love to see someone tie in with the town where if we can get some kind of grants to, um, to, to do this type of work, someone that we could look at where it's not top dollar, but it's just, right, doing the beautifying of the, the town which we're, which we're looking at. The thing is with, uh, the, uh, the sealing though, once the sun beats on it, it's, it, you know, it really doesn't look that good after three to four months. It's just a coating.
There's a commercial grade and there's a residential grade. Unfortunately, you go to Home Depot, get a certain type of sealer. And then you know that there's an industrial for a road.
Seal mat, so makes us out of Baltimore, they'll use it.
And I'm saying that because I know that there was several areas that we done a couple of houses. And when I say we done, we had some grants, all pitching and do, one of them filled in the cracks, which probably was the best, but more expensive way. But, and it, it also made it last longer, so I just wanted to put that in.
Yeah, we got a machine that fills, a crack filler.
Road buggy.
And now we go over the seal.
I think that our, Tom, this is Tom, he's with Patriots Glen, he's a board member at...
Tom, give your address. Brad, I need your address. And Jeff, I need your address also before we...
Okay.
You wanna give it now?
Yeah, give it now.
Mine's 196 Breon Lane in Elkton. Mine's 423 Patriots, way in Patriots.
And Jeff? That'd be perfect. Pass that up there to Jill. Thank you very much.
I think when, when, you know, the homeowners association, from my perspective, I mean, we would be helpful or supportive of, if you guys wanted to do an initiative, I would be, uh, happy to kind of get some of, you know, we, we have, I forget here, Jeff, we have Jeff here. But, you know, there are alternatives, things as well, that if you guys wanted to look at that, you know, Jeff might not do the cape sealing. There might be other products. You know, I, I didn't get a chance to really look at, um, like a paving fabric product, a woven paving fab, paving fabric. I know Patriots Glen has paving fabric between the base course and the surface course. And, and with the ground that was out there, you know, it seems they've held up good in some of the areas that looked like they might fail now. Um, so there are some other alternatives out there. Ultimately, if it's a path that you guys wanted to go, we certainly could bring the options to the table. We just, I didn't spend a lot of time looking at options if it wasn't something viable that you guys wanted to look at.
I, I think, uh, we did exactly what, what my goal was, was to bring it to the, uh, group's attention that this is a method that maybe we could go down the road of, probably one of the most powerful, uh, was that second, uh, paragraph from the, uh, Federal Department of Transportation that if we could spend $1, it could save you $6 to $10. And, uh, you know, we, we, we're at a loss when it comes to, uh, our paving dollars and our state revenue, uh, dollars that come across highway user tax money. And, uh, we only have so much that we can use. But this certainly, it's, it's certainly a lot less than paving the whole road if it's something that can be done before it needs to be paved.
There was something, Mr. Man, that was done not too long ago on Red Hill Road. That was a tar and chip, what I believe. And it didn't, there was a little bit of...
Yeah, the slurry, it was a slurry mix.
A slurry mix, yeah. Which, which wasn't the most, um, welcomed idea for paving a road. And it turned out pretty good. It's, it's a very nice seal there. And people say, "Oh, that's something different. It's new and we're not really, uh, you know, that's not, we're not familiar with it." And a good example of taking an alternative direction and working well.
You know, if you do go this direction, you gotta remember that, I'm not, no, I've just written down three of them, uh, things we gotta book in account, take in account. Town roads, the state roads, the private roads. Once you start doing this, everybody's gonna want it done. And if you're doing one area, then up, the next area is gonna want it. And when you start running to your private, your homeowners association, what's gonna be taken by their...
Well, I think part of that, that is educated.
But I understand that. I'm just saying, once you start doing things for the public roads or the town roads, then you're gonna, you're gonna run into people coming in wanting to do their roads because you done Patriots Glen.
I will submit that that's a good thing. Because I think it'll bring in, you know, high ratables and then bring in, you know, more people to pay higher dol, higher dollars and higher taxes, uh, to the area. And that's what we want, I think. I think that's our, our goal, it should be.
Do you have any, do you have any information that would back that, that statement up? That increased property value?
No, but I think that's kinda being implied. They just put a new golf course in there. They, that, those people went in there, put that new golf course in there. My property value probably went up $5,000 without even thinking about it. That's just a given.
I would consider that a hard add. An assault add, like on a house, um, you know, you remodel the, the entire kitchen. That would be a hard add. That would, you know, just to add carpet to it would be a soft add because it's supposed to have nice carpet. And I am one of those homeowners that has that big ugly patch in front of his house.
Yeah.
And I was the last house in the neighborhood and, and they messed up. So I mean, I have this huge 20 by 10 ugly, so I, aesthetically, I, oh, heck yeah.
Wouldn't you think that if that was just one clear carpet, it would be more attractive?
Two sides of the point, at least for me, is return on investment for the town. You know, if, if Mary Jo pointed out, you know, if it's, if it's a year or two and it's $18,000 for one road. Right? And not to say that there's not other options or anything like that. And I know that we're in the infancy of this. Um, you know, I, I would really wanna see the return investment. And does it really increase? Is, is there something out there that says, "Yes, property values will increase." So this way, if not only does it help homeowner, landlords, the town, everybody in one, one...
Yeah.
And then the other question, sorry to jump on, a couple of questions here.
Do?
Is, if, if it's such a great idea, then why isn't everybody doing it? You know, it's been around for, for a very long time. So when, when, when the county does it, Parker County, Cecil County, Alton County, it's the state. Uh, why aren't they doing it then also to, to increase the longevity of their roads?
With the state, I think, I think they're, when you get into, like, state county roads, if they have a fund to do roads, they're doing more quantity, right? So their, their, their return on their investment probably, they're doing miles of road at one time. They get a contractor to come in with milling machines to be able to take on a large number of, or a large amount of road, which decreases the cost to get it closer to, you know, what we're looking at, you know, on a remediation.
It's going to increase even longer, in, in my mind. It would de, it would decrease, uh, having to replace it further down the road because now you're adding just a couple more pennies, uh, each square foot by putting a sealant on it to, to push that out on a replacement even further. So in my mind, I'm thinking preventive maintenance. You know, you spend a little bit now, I agree, spend a little bit now, you save a lot later on. So why aren't they doing it now? Again, I'm just playing devil's advocate and devil's always in it.
Well, yeah, usually what happens is you're paying that bigger dollar down the road when there's complete deterioration. And that happens everywhere.
I'm almost wondering why we couldn't acquire it, uh, for the new roads as they're coming in.
I was just gonna say same thing.
To, to seal it as, uh, as part of fixed cost, to... Bidding, bidding on that. I know a lot of times you will have those, the mains break down, you're going in, cutting and patching, but...
I don't know what the best way to go.
I think the idea, I mean, I think that it would be something that you would be interested in. I, I talked to a couple of people about the cape sealing. And a couple of the counties that are doing it south are doing it. And they, and, and he was, he offered, you know, I told him, you know, the agency state, I don't waste much of his time again, for anybody really. But he said, you know, "If you're interested, go look at something." You know, he could put us in contact with the people at the county. They're engineers that do it. You know, and they could even give us, if you guys go down that path, I think it would be something that, that we could probably get you some information on. And C, they might be a county that does it. I just don't spend any time down there. I know that driving through Cecil County, they don't. You know, they, they technically repair, I've seen them chip and, I haven't even really seen a county do the thing they did on Red Hill.
I've seen a county that chip and stuff down there, like outside of Fort Deposit, and area.
Well, I think the main thing is, you brought it to our attention, it kinda opened up all of our eyes a little bit to start looking. Any questions from the board at all?
Oh, as far as shuttle verse, verse a truck, seal my driveway, uh, which I haven't done.
Are you getting free advice here?
Uh, you know, you're not really putting a load on it. But when you do, when you put a load on it with these big trucks and the big plows and, and stuff like that, does that decrease the longevity? Cause I know you said there's sand, yeah, there's a sand mix in there. Does that not get, does it make it smoother? Does it make it...
I, I, if you guys were interested in some other, I did get kind of some comparisons on unit costs or a little bit of them. And I didn't bring the whole breakdown of what it looked like. So I was doing, you know, everything from seal to, you know, a full overlay. Or I, the only number of don't have is the removal replacement, the full mill out and then two lifts, you know, base course and a surface with the full renovation. But I did break it out and, you know, it runs, you know, whatever that square foot number up to, you know, getting closer to replacement cost.
Are you suggesting maybe, well, it would be with the commissioners and the mayor, if you wanna go further with this, you probably wanna put a task force together and say, "Okay, let's get some more information." You, you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think our public works, we, we paved a lot of roads. So you, you know, we have to put out the bid to get the companies.
Sure.
Um, so if we do have a road we have to pave, that pave, I think that's the time we say, "Do we wanna put the sealant on then?" And then find out, you know, how much, if you're talking $1 extra then, to save the money in the long run, I think that's the perfect time to do it, um, is when we have to redo the roads. That's, you know, cause to go out, you just can't do, like Commissioner Heinrich said, you can't do one road and not spend, you know, "Why didn't my street get done?" Or his, or Rob's, or, you know, we're talking $18,000 for one road. I don't know how many roads are in the town of Elkton.
A lot.
A lot, so budget wise...
It's usually a dollar worth of seal coating.
Are you, are you, are there any asphalt, roads being asphalted right now?
I, our public works would do that. I, I think we have a petition for, uh, the Red, for the Red.
I mean, it looks like, just if you just drive right here, they're gonna be doing some paving out, out here. It looks like they had it cut up and, you know...
That's a state up there.
Oh, that's a state.
Yeah, state highway.
Even the state, it's, it's drawn up, yeah. Yeah, right, cutting up again. It's gonna be done over and over again. The reason they're doing this big overlays is because maybe they didn't address it in the first place.
Right, and I think that's great to bring it to our attention that it's something that we should look at and then look at the different types that there are.
Yeah.
Well, very good. Is there, Dan, do you have any questions or comments? Or you wanna get with it later if there's any need to move forward or, or to talk, get any more information? Maybe you got it all?
Yeah, you would, you would consult with KCI, cause they, states have specialists on roads.
Very good.
That's how we do it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not the engineer, we're just thought about it.
Listen, I appreciate you bringing it to us because there is a lot of mess. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
On the price of building, say Patriots, uh, coming from the board's perspective, we still have to do the parking lot in Patriots Glen, uh, at the homeowners cost. Is there any reduction in cost to the, to the city or to us if we do that all in one shot?
Pro, I would think there is probably an advantage to somebody like an S&amp;M paving.
Right.
It has, already has their equipment there.
Yeah, that would also be maybe something out there for, you know, you ask how many communities or if there was something that would be done from the town side to add more value to bringing it in. I think in some of our associations, we would be willing to, if it would help lower the cost...
Yes.
By quantity, maybe share our part of it. You know, I can use, I lived in Washington when I was on the board there. You know, we just seal coated our, our parking lot. We made everybody move up. And we've also entertained the idea of seal coating all of the parking spaces in front of the townhomes because they, you know, they, they look bad, they get deteriorated, and we look like doing nothing. Our volume was terrible. We, you know, it was just a small amount and there's some, some work that needs to be done. But if there was, it would be helpful, you know, to Tom's kind of question, to get better volume at a smaller job, to lower your price, give a benefit for the association. So I'd be happy to work with you.
I appreciate that. Great, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to you. Well, we're gonna bounce again a little bit and I'm gonna invite Mr. Martin Emmett-Cub.
Martin Emmett, 30 Nessie Drive. I just basically have a simple request. I'll give you a little history.
As, as Martin's doing this, I, I just wanted to mention, I don't think that, uh, I, I know, Mary, you had some kids today, some programs. I don't, I don't know, unless you wanna listen to the presentations and, and Gene and...
You don't need to be here.
You don't need to be here, unless you want to. You guys are more than welcome to be here today and listen to the Police Department and Public Works and, and Martin's presentation. But I don't think, uh...
Alright, thank you.
That's your call. Love to have you. I love to have you. And that's all Department head. Yes, sir.
Little hand out there if you wanna finish passing right around. Um, for those of you that have been here, um, I'm sure you remember Mr. De Sabatino and Wilbur Properties and the big annexation up on Red Hill and Delancey Road. And I kinda got caught up in that. Mr., uh, Mr. De Sabatino bought my property, 345 Delancey Road, uh, as part of his effort to, to do the, uh, the annexation and so on and so forth. Uh, and at the time, you know, I was the, I held the mortgage, so I, I did raise a, a little stink in here and basically I was told to go home because, you know, I didn't have any standing as, as the mortgage owner. But now, of course, he's defaulted and I own his property again. And then it's pretty simple. I'm just asking to, to put that property back in the county. Uh, and the reason being is, you know, it would probably lend itself to being a little, little, to my advantage to be in the town of Elkton, except there's no way to get any, any services through there. Uh, I sat down with Craig Trostle and he basically said, "There's no, no right of ways or anything to, to get, uh, you know, sewer water back in there." So, uh, you know, I'm paying an extra $2,000. And the little graph that I, I did here, um, it just basically runs a very small, uh, sample of the taxes. When you can see 2010, 2011, you had a little tax increase and then when the annexation hit 2012. And these are the evaluations. And these are the evaluations, and I chose those three years primarily because the, the evaluation was the same, so you could see a relative increase in taxes. And this, you know, over the three years is about two thousand dollars, and the house up there is fourteen hundred square feet, so, so it's pretty expensive for, you know, so, so I'm, but my, my, my request is to return it to the county.
Now, there was, there was, uh, your home and two additional lots.
Yes, yes, I own, I own from right in front of Pine, Pine Valley, uh, and all the way, almost to the bottom of the hill, there's one other lot that one of the members of Wilbur Properties has purchased.
Three parcels.
Three parcels.
Yeah, I own three parcels.
It's all, it's all wooded, right?
Well, no, there's a house on the first parcel, up across from Pine Valley, and then it's all wooded the rest of the way down. About three and a quarter acres total. It's just a long narrow, long narrow property.
Are you currently using, uh, town services now as far as trash pickup?
Yeah, we are using the trash pickup. And I have a tenant in there, you know.
And you're not using water and sewer?
No, because there is no water and sewer, it's still the same water septic and, and water, you know, well watered and used. And I live there, you know, and like I said, I didn't, I didn't move out until such time as he bought it to, to put it into that project. Uh, and of course, then he stiffed me for, for the mortgage too, so now I've got a mortgage and that property over there, so it's, 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 it's a strain, really.
Very good. Does anyone from the board have any questions? I guess you guys were all on the board, right? You were all on the board, you got the presentation. Yeah, any, anything that we need to know? Lou, is there anything we need to know in general?
Uh, you can, you can talk to council about, there's no statutory, I mean, there's no statutory procedure for de-annexing, but the risk for annexing. So probably the simplest way I would recommend, unless the council object, is just do a resolution to amend the channel charter that would delete these three parcels of land.
Full disclosure, how you represented Mr. McCub, ten, fifteen years ago, and, you know, the property, a matter related to this property having to do with property boundary on the other side, unrelated to this topic, and he and I have many, tight-knit relationships with each other, so it's, it's not a conflict, but just in disclosure of our representation. I think that's probably the appropriate way. I had read the requests, and so I didn't have an issue with it, if that's appropriate way to address it.
Very good. Thank you for your presentation. Can we have your request?
Yeah. If you, you have my number, if you need anything or any further information.
Thank you. All right, uh, chief, the Elton Police Department is on.
All right. Give me a, give me a minute here, please.
I'm looking forward to this report and the next report.
May I have two more reports?
Well, listen, I think this is good for, to educate. They're going to be educated on this, and I think, uh, I think it's important for all of us to understand it a little bit better.
Just for your information, I'll send a letter to the county, uh, telling them about the de-annexation, to see if they have any objections to that.
I think that would be good, it's on their backbones anyway, but just as a matter of note.
I was going to wait for Michelle to come back in.
Okay, okay, very good. Very good. Hello, Mr. Butler?
I'm fine, how are you?
Doing great.
Good.
Anybody need a water bottle?
You know, I could use one, thank you. I got one. I'll probably have another one.
Anybody else? Two bucks, please.
Nah, you want me to just go ahead and start?
Yeah, I should go ahead and start.
Okay, very good.
All right, chief, you're on.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Uh, good afternoon, everyone, good afternoon, folks. Uh, I was asked by Mayor Commissioners to attend today's workshop and give an overview of the department and department structure as relates to personnel, accreditation costs, police facility, space concerns, and comparisons to some other communities who have a police department similar in size. So that's what I'll be covering here today in the PowerPoint presentation. The introduction and mission of the Elton Police Department is to improve the quality of life for all citizens, businesses, and visitors to the town of Elton through professionalism, knowledge, courage, and integrity. The men and women of the police department strive to provide the highest level of police service to the community and citizens we are sworn to protect. To be loyal and respectful not only to each other, but to our elected officials and all the citizens that we serve. Uh, very briefly, our service area and population, we cover an area of approximately nine square miles, and our population, uh, approximately sixteen thousand citizens. Obviously, our daytime population may be a little bit larger than that, and we also, you know, can't account for the roads that our officers drive on that are not actually in town limits, but still have residents and businesses on them, and we can't ever just turn our back on something that may be occurring in those areas.
Can I ask a question before you move on?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, go back.
Yeah.
With the nine square miles, do you have, and I know you do, and the number of police officers you have, evidently you must have a formula of how you cover that area, the nine square miles.
Yes, uh, we have, uh, three areas, uh, east sector, west sector, and north sector, and, uh, we look at our calls for, for service, and generally we put our, our folks into areas, you know, with the heaviest amount of calls, get the most coverage.
I, I'd just like to add that the, uh, the latest road counts, the Gene Minner showed to me just recently, we had over eighteen thousand cars that used Bridge Street, like on a, certainly in a daily basis, and Route forty, I think was, I think it's over thirty thousand cars on Route forty. And so there's a, a lot of action, uh, in the town of Elton.
And Michelle Hansen, you know, just informed me too, we have sixty-four miles of roadway and within the town limits.
It is town road.
Uh, just to, uh, let you know who some of our allied partners are, whether they're law enforcement or not. Cecil County Sheriff's Department, Maryland State Police, the other municipal police departments in Cecil County, Federal Bureau of Investigation, Cecil County Drug Task Force, law enforcement in both Pennsylvania and Delaware, uh, social services, child protective services, parole and probation, domestic violence, uh, and last but not least, Department of Emergency Services, which includes our single required company and ambulance, and our nine-one-one dispatch center. Uh, before I talk about this slide, this is where I'm referring to is municipal staffing workload comparison. Uh, we've taken some information provided us by other, other agencies. Uh, I'm not completely comfortable in, in comparing our department with other departments, especially in a, in a public forum, but, uh, they requested, and this is what I'm, I'm providing. Uh, you can look at it, uh, our number of officers in our department, quite similar to, to the other agencies. Uh, what, what I look at is, that stands out for me anyways, are Part One crimes, uh, obviously significantly more here in Elton than the other jurisdictions.
What is Part One crime?
Uh, more serious offenses, rape, robbery, arson, theft, burglary. Uh, our criminal arrests, uh, I'm, I'm pretty proud of this, seventeen hundred and fifty of them during two thousand thirteen. Uh, our, our incidents that our officers are involved in, thirty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven. And, uh, the operating budget that we operate under, I, I know oftentimes it was under a lot of scrutiny, uh, this shows here that I think we're right in the ballpark with other agencies that are our size. And, uh, I know it is a lot of dollars and cents, taxpayers pay for police protection, but I think it's pretty consistent with, with what other, what other jurisdictions are paying.
With the similarities, is there rationale why the Part Number One crimes are so high, and I guess the closest being West Minister, which is two hundred, a less, and the minimum being LA, which is four eighty-one?
Uh, I, I can tell you that, uh, a lot of our Part One, One crimes actually come out of some of our businesses, i.e., nearly three hundred, nearly three hundred of those a year come from Walmart, just based on thefts alone. Uh, and some of your other places also have, have a lot of shop. And, uh, no denying, uh, we have quite a few assaults and other drug arrests, other arrests, like, like drug arrests also sometimes fall into that. Uh, we have an aggressive police force, so, uh, when guys are out there stirring things up, making arrests, that is going to reflect in your, in those Part One crimes, when they're making arrests for Part One crimes.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions on, on this? Uh, here's the, uh, police department organizational chart. Uh, you can see, uh, chief police at the top, administrative secretary, captain's position, three lieutenants, and so on down the, down the line here. Patrol groups, individual lieutenants have areas of, of responsibility. Uh, include information systems, records, parking enforcement, recruitment, voice and narcotics, property and evidence, uh, school resource unit, and I'm going to go into a little, uh, more detail on these as, as we move forward. Uh, patrol division consists of twenty-five sworn personnel, a bureau commander is lieutenant, four patrol squads, a sergeant, five officers make up, uh, four patrol squads. Uh, bureau commander is also responsible for the parking enforcement unit, which is one civilian employed. Oops, I think I skipped one, sorry. Uh, our support services consists of a total of six personnel, one, one sworn and five civilian, bureau commander's lieutenant, there's administrative assistant who's a civilian, and the records clerks are also civilians, and there's four of those. Special operations consists of a total of fourteen sworn personnel. Uh, bureau commander is a lieutenant, criminal investigation division is one sergeant, three detectives, our street crimes unit is one sergeant, three officers. Uh, we have two officers assigned to the Cecil County Drug Task Force. Uh, we have K nine, K nine's name is Rommel, and he is handled by an officer first class.
Is he a German shepherd?
Yes, he is.
Would Rommel?
Yeah. Uh, we have two officers assigned to our school resource unit, and we have three civilians also assigned to this unit, and they are our school crossing guards. Uh, chief police duties include overseeing and managing day-to-day operations of the department. Uh, these include, but not limited to, staffing levels in our, uh, major areas, patrol, criminal investigation, parking enforcement, and administrative positions. Chief is responsible for drafting and implementing the department's budget. Uh, chief must consistently monitor expectations of my direct report, and that's the town administrator, uh, elected officials, as well as community, and provide guidance to command staff for proper implementation of police activities in relationship to these expectations. Uh, chief monitors community expectations by attending and participating in a variety of town, county, state programs and meetings. Uh, captain's position would be second in command of the police department. Duties include general oversight, patrol division, special operations division, support services division. Captain coordinates with lieutenants to implement divisional goals and objectives. Uh, the position is also responsible for daily budget oversight, and does most purchasing for the department, uh, building maintenance, court liaison, public information officer, handles citizen community inquiries, uh, policy development, review and implementation, and coordinates and oversees most internal investigations. Uh, lieutenant's position is also a command role within the department, lieutenant's managed, uh, efficient operations of a specific bureau. Those bureaus being, uh, special operations, which is our vice, uh, drug unit, uh, criminal investigation division, school resource officers, and K nine. Uh, patrol functions for a patrol lieutenant are calls for service, uh, other patrol duties, traffic, and special events. Uh, our support services lieutenant handles information systems, records management, grants, recruitment and training. Information systems, when I say that, I'm talking specifically about, uh, national crime information center computer, uh, those types of things. Patrol sergeants, uh, plan supervised daily work, squad members are responsible for ensuring that his or her subordinates understand and comply with department goals, policies, procedures. Uh, instruction and guides are given to officers in carrying out criminal investigations, traffic, and patrol services. And a sergeant may engage in active patrol and handle calls for services needed. They also conduct routine inspections of vehicles and equipment, uh, they approve report, and they prepare performance evaluations for each of their subordinates. Uh, corporals position, a corporal is not a first-line supervisor, however, in the absence of a sergeant, they would, uh, fulfill the duties of a sergeant. Uh, when they're not acting as a sergeant, and most of the time they're not, they function as a regular patrol officer. And they conduct investigations, make arrests, and answer calls for service. Criminal investigators, the criminal investigation division is comprised of one sergeant, three detectives. Our detective service both crime scene processors and investigators. Their responsibility investigating most all death cases, robberies, sex offenses, crimes against children, white collar crime, and computer crimes. Most of these cases are very complicated, require significant commitment of time and other resources. Uh, CID sergeant is also the department's evidence custodian. Uh, total number of cases submitted during counter year two thousand thirteen were two hundred and ninety-one, and seventy-four percent of those cases were closed by CID. Evidence submitted, uh, which requires examination by the crime lab, uh, must generally be transported to the Maryland State Police Forensic Sciences Division, located either in Pikesville or in Berlin, Maryland. And they go to get a word depending on the type of evidence that, that they have. But were required to do that transport, it wasn't too many years ago that state police would actually, uh, send somebody to our, our facility and pick up our evidence and transport it, of course, that service is no longer provided. Uh, criminal investigators also write, uh, search and seizure warrants for persons, property, DNA, among other things, and as many a hundred, as many as a hundred and fifty, uh, warrants are, are written in a, in a year. Uh, they also are responsible for conducting comprehensive background investigations on all new police employees. Our street crimes unit is part of special operations bureau, uh, they handle drug and prostitution cases, uh, conduct saturation patrols in targeted enforcement areas, uh, conduct covert operations, write search warrants, perform foot and bicycle patrols, and they also assist the patrol division and criminal investigation division as needed. School resource officers, school resource officers, primary responsibility is service to the department's liaison with both public and private schools in Elton. These officers investigate most incidents that occur in schools, they teach at their program, they teach citizen, uh, they teach the citizens' police academy, safetyville, and the junior police academy programs. Uh, administrative secretaries, duties provide clerical support for the chief police and other members of the command staff, completes all payroll responsibilities, leave entries and for each department member. Uh, responsible for filing, maintaining administrative and confidential reports, processing files, all requisitions, and, uh, like I saw, uh, those other duties as needed and directed.
Matt, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
With the school, uh, resource officers that teach safetyville and everything.
Mm-hmm.
We were going to try to have a component for Amtrak to bring in their police.
Yes.
Safety along the railroad tracks and everything this year. We met with Charles Matlack about putting fences up and everything, and he suggested that Amtrak, they will, they can supply a police, one of their police, uh, to help , to teach public safety as part of the safetyville program, or one of the other programs that the school, the schools have with our, our people. So to enhance that training, keep people off the tracks, stuff like that. Did we do?
That, that's okay. I'm all, I'm all out of sorts now, no. Uh, records management clerk, uh, records management clerks are responsible for, uh, twenty-four hour days, seven day a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year coverage of the records department, and that, uh, primarily is, is the room that you see when you walk into the police station, you're greeted by a person at the window, that's a part of our, uh, records clerk team. Uh, one of the reasons that we have to have twenty-four seven coverage in that room is the existence of our NCIC computer, it's got to be manned twenty-four seven, and, uh, that's one reason for that, uh, requirement for that coverage. Uh, they're also required to do uniform crime reporting submissions to the state, following all criminal and non-criminal records and reports, file all court summonses, ensure payment for mailing out, uh, report copies, process report requests for the courts, maintain and update police department's reports and records retention schedule, and this, uh, is very important. Uh, responsible for rendering all warrants and criminal summonses, missing persons reports, And that's one reason for that requirement, for that coverage. They're also required to do uniform crime reporting submissions to the state, following all criminal and non-criminal records and reports, file all court summonses, ensure payment for mailing out report copies, process report requests for the courts, maintain and update police department's reports and records retention schedule, and this is very important. Responsible for rendering all warrants and criminal summonses, missing persons reports, and stolen property.
Matt, if I were to comment what the NCIC system is.
Yeah, that's where we're able to...
Do you know what that is?
Yeah, that's where we're able to check a person's status, if they're wanted on a warrant, an outstanding warrant.
Stolen property.
Stolen property, those types of things. Parking Enforcement Personnel, pretty self-explanatory, this officer is responsible for enforcement of parking regulations in Elkhorn, include the issuance of parking citations, the collection of monies from parking meters, and covering of meters during holidays and special events. Crossing Guards are responsible for directing traffic at school crossings for student pedestrians and bus traffic. Crossing Guards are detailed at three locations in Elkhorn, Whitehall Road, at the Holly Hall School, Courtney Drive, at the Thompson Estate School, and Melbourne Boulevard, Thompson Drive.
The county pays the town $5,000 for, towards that cost, I was just getting off.
Okay, I'm moving to a different area here, and that is, information was requested on the Police Department possibly becoming accredited, and that would be done under CALIAS standards. And CALIAS stands for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. Formed in 1979 by law enforcement executives and organizations such as the International Association of Chiefs of Police and the National Sheriff's Association. The purpose of CALIAS is to improve the delivery of services by maintaining up-to-date high public safety standards. Some of the goals of accreditation would be to strengthen crime prevention and control, establish fair and nondiscriminatory personnel practices, improve service delivery, increase community confidence, and solidify inter-agency cooperation, all of which I believe we already Cost, the initial cost for accreditation is $10,100. The cost for initial site assessment is $5,500. The annual accreditation and maintenance cost for an agency our size would be $4,065. And you're basically under contract for three years, which, if my math is correct, you have to $27,795 for the first three years. That doesn't include costs for a person coming here to do the accreditation, I believe it's part of the deal that you have to pay for transportation, lodging, and other incidentals. And it also does not cover the cost of improvements that may have to be made to achieve accreditation. Yes.
Elkhorn Police Department is not under accreditation, or is?
No, we are not.
I know that, alright, I'm getting there from you, I know that. And with the last chief that we have in the previous, I guess they never saw that, I know there's a cost factor, I know basically it improves our relationship with the public to know that, you know, you're going through this and going through that, and I also know that it's not necessary, as you just mentioned, to be an upstanding police department.
Right.
That's fine.
My recommendation on the accreditation is, obviously, we're already into a budget cycle here, and we wouldn't allocate funds at this point to do it. I would say if we, if it's the sense of the board that you want to move forward, then we need to do some further investigation and exploration into the matter. I'd also like to share with the board that our policy and procedure manual has been tested in both the circuit court for Cecil County and in the federal court in Baltimore, and it's held up in both of those courts.
Right.
Also, the local government insurance trust, who ensures the town, has never had any exception with any of our policies, procedures, or practices, and nor have they ever recommended that we become accredited. So, I just kind of look at those things, and I look at the cost that goes out. We have a professional police organization. We have, most of our standards are high, and we have great working relationship with our board here and with allied police agencies. So, you know, I don't necessarily know that it's really necessary for us to do, but...
Right.
Grants.
And all the command staff have been through FBI National Academy, too, right?
Yes, that's correct. And just to clarify one other thing on the accreditation, it has absolutely nothing to do with federal Bureau of Investigation. They are not FBI standards, the FBI has not come in, they're simply not part of it. It has nothing to do with the FBI. It's simply the Accreditation Committee that does that, it's made up of law enforcement and private sector CEOs and chiefs of police.
So, in certain instances, nothing more than just cosmetic, because it's something that you don't need?
I would agree with that. Grants, I know there's been some question on grants. We do apply for grants. I cannot say for, with 100%, certainty that we apply for more than anybody else in the county, but I think we might. We spend a lot of money on overtime that is reimbursed to us out of these grants, and just to show you, some of them, DWI patrols, driving while intoxicated patrols, tobacco enforcement, distracted driving, saturation patrols and drug enforcement, and underage drinking initiatives are just some of the grants that we apply for as it relates to patrol functions. But we also get grants for some of our specialized equipment. Wasn't too many years ago that the state mandated that certain types of crimes that are being investigated, when we, when our investigators would be interviewing a suspect or an arrestee, that those interviews be recorded on a video and audio recording. So, we searched out for a grant, and the town was gracious enough to provide us with a room, and we now have that capability to do that. We get ballistic vests on a grant. Now, it's a match grant. Bureau of Justice provides 50% funding for bulletproof vests, and then the town picks up the other 50%. And we've actually gone through a process over the past couple of years where everyone in the department has been issued a new vest, so there shouldn't be anybody out on the road policing the town who's not in a vest that's maybe max three years old. Grants also paid for weapons upgrade in 2013. It's also paid for entry and breaching equipment for all of our patrol cars, and what that is, is things like halogen bars, tools to get through locked doors and windows, should that need ever arise. It's also provided grant funding for our e-ticket program, which is electronic writing of traffic tickets. And it's provided training room equipment. In our training room in the Police Department, we have a setup very similar to this with an overhead projector and screen for us to do this type of presentation.
On your vest, when you have it for three years, are there anything that you could trade back in, give it a reading, done?
We keep them for five, and we try to stay on track of not letting anybody go beyond five years. But no, there is no buyback. Okay, moving on into the other area of concern was police station and some space concerns. The police station is approximately 7,500 square feet. Areas of concern are locker room space, record storage, and archives. Our onsite records room also serves as our supply room for stationary paper, pens, pencils, envelopes, you name it. Another area of concern is our property and evidence room, and filing space for officers who presently are using our kitchen area for filing cabinet space, and our report writing This picture, I took a picture of the outside to show you where, to show you where our archives is, and this is down at Public Works, and Dan, this is, Dan, this is no pointing of finger you in any way, shape, or form. And...
I'm going to give them a heads up.
That's darker than it really is.
The place painted it.
But anyway, here's walking into the garage, and in this area is the archives room. And here's inside, and what I want to point out here is we're kind of up to the ceiling in our, in our storage area. A lot of our shelving space is taken up. You can see here, at one point, the roof had leaked, that has since been fixed. We haven't had a leak, we haven't had a leak through the roof in a while, I think we had some water come in on the floor at some point. But when this leaked, we hadn't been in a room for some time, and several years' worth of files had been destroyed, and they were just beyond recovery. And this slide just shows a couple of different angles. This is, let me just go back here, so I'm still talking about this. The one disadvantage to this is not necessarily that it's at Public Works, but it's off-site, and the ideal situation would be to have your archives onsite. This is our onsite record storage, and the picture here is just the same room, just showing you one side, showing you two sides here. You see, we've got boxes in the middle. Now, this is after a clean-out, too. We had just done in the past month a rather large clean-out of our property and evidence room and of our record storage. We try to stay on the records retention schedule as much as possible, but what you see there in the box is the stuff that's required for us to keep, and eventually that'll get moved to our off-site location.
How long do you have to keep everything?
Some of it indefinitely. Different forms, some of our retentions, like only a year, so we can purge it rather quickly, but offense reports, arrest reports, some of that stuff, we got to keep that forever.
Do we have microfiche or any other type of scan?
Yeah, we still need the hard copy for a lot of it, though. And we do, we had gone through with some of our order records and scanned them in, they are scanned in, kept on disk. This is our property and evidence room. Just to talk a little bit about this particular room, it is by far the most important room in the Police Department, and if there's one room that will get a Chief of Police fired rather quickly, it's this room, and the reason that it could become a point of contention is, this is evidence. This is evidence in a criminal case, and it's got to be properly accounted for at all times. This room is very limited access. The nearly 25 years I've been with the department, I can tell you there's been only four people that have ever had access to property and evidence in the time that I've been with the department. So, it's very limited access, but it's also very tight, very tight quarters in there. What you're seeing in these pictures up on the top here, these are all, this is all evidence that we cannot get rid of. We have to keep this evidence, and it's beginning to take up space, and some of the more significant crimes that occur, because of their severity, we're required to keep evidence sometimes for a very long time, sometimes forever. And this is our forever shelf, so we can't get rid of this stuff. What also holds us up in the property and evidence room is getting cases to court. We make an arrest, we have property or evidence, may sit in our property and evidence room for years if we can't get the person in the court, and not all, not all people you arrest always show up to court. And again, this is subjected to a twice-a-year clean-out, and we had just done a clean-out prior to taking this picture, which was actually just taken the other day. Things we keep in the property and evidence room are everything from clothing items, drugs, knives, baseball bats, guns. During our most recent clean-out of the evidence room, we destroyed 40 firearms that have been taken off the streets of the town here over the past probably two or three years, and we still have probably an additional, I believe we have little over 40 weapons still waiting for either disposition by an owner or disposition in court.
How do you get rid of the weapons?
We destroy them.
You have a keg with flood cameras or...
No, when we had access to the huge steel plant over in Delaware, we would take them over and melt them down, but that's since closed, so we're back to taking them to Public Works where they take an oxy-acetylene torch and cut them up.
Years ago, we took them down to Baltimore, put them in a smelting pot.
Mm-hmm.
We had to witness it.
Yes.
The sense of them down.
Who has accessibility to this room?
That would be our CID Sergeant, and then two other persons in our CID...
Including yourself?
Team, Bart Mc...
Including Elsa, including yourself?
No, I don't, as the Chief Police, I have access to the key box, which is access to keys for the entire room, but as a matter of practice, I haven't been in that room any more than two or three times in the past couple of years, and that's for simply an inspection, just to inspect the room.
My next question is, when someone goes into that room, or the three of them, do they have to sign in to note that they were in that room, or you don't have that?
Now, well, if they're in there, they're on a computer, and that would, that would show that they're in there, because every piece of evidence that we have is logged into a computer, so when a piece of evidence goes out, it's logged out, shows that it's out either for court or investigation, and then has to be logged back in. And then I spoke about the lunch area, that is also serving as an area for filing cabinets and file space for our officers. Okay, recruitment and retention. We are presently down eight total positions. The hiring of qualified women and men who want to be police officers is a difficult task. Simply put, we don't have the numbers of people lining up for these jobs the way that they used two years ago. And the difficulty that we have in hiring is not in any way, shape, or form unique to help in most law enforcement. If you speak to people in other police agencies, they'll tell you that it's difficult to find qualified candidates and get them through the hiring process, and I'll touch on, you know, what our hiring process includes here. The town of Elkhorn has made a great effort to maintain pay and benefit and pension parity with allied agencies in the region, who include both Cecil and Hartford Counties. The hiring and training of police officers takes a significant amount of time, effort, and resources. Police candidates have to complete a 51-page pre-screening application form, that's what we refer to as a background booklet. Part of the hiring process is for them to participate in a written exam, physical agility test, drug screening, polygraph examining, and oral review board. They're also required to complete the background investigation, where family, friends, and present and past employers are interviewed before they would be offered a position as a police officer with the town of Elkhorn.
Going back to your recruitment plan.
Yes.
Do you have a recruitment plan that directs itself, and then you probably don't, to diversity? And the reason why I'm saying with the coming of, the nonexistence of a multi-cultural society, you've got ethnic groups living within your towns, you know, sometimes your police department hopefully could reflect some of the same. I know certainly here it doesn't, not to say that you haven't, you know, tried that before. I know we have... I know we had one way in human resources, we tried to, you know, recruit, you know, diversity, and it was very difficult to do. So I would know, you know, if you're doing that now, have intentions of doing that now, I think it's a good idea.
That's something that we definitely consider. And to answer your question directly, no, we don't have anything in place right now that's already in any part of the population, as you're describing. But it's certainly something that we'll consider doing. Yes, ma'am?
We do. When we go into our recruiting for that, because I do put out the recruiting, I work with their recruiting commissioner, and we do, when we advertise, we put in the MML, and that is recruiting for the whole state of Maryland. And within the geographical area of that, we do look at diversity in different areas like that. So we are looking at the whole state of Maryland, so that would fall within the criteria of diversity.
Do we have any Spanish-speaking officers?
No, we don't have anyone that's bilingual. We have some that know some Spanish, but nobody who is really fluent.
I think eventually, it's very important.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the old days, we had a couple people that spoke Spanish.
You came in, started handing it over to the ass.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. You're welcome, commissioner. Some of our department goals, and I think it kind of was narrow here, but I think, you know, this is the important stuff. Continue a team atmosphere by maintaining open lines of communication between all divisions within our department, but also maintain as lines of communication with elected officials and other town departments. We aim to improve social order on our main street, as well as the rest of the community, and doing that with cooperation of citizens and businesses. And we'll continue our downtown police visibility by means of increased foot and bike patrol. And we'll also continue to maintain neighborhood traffic safety in the town of Elkhorn on a daily basis, and improve school security by conducting daily contact with school administrators and staff, and our continued school resource officer program. And we'll continue to work with elected officials to achieve goals set by you to improve the quality of life in Elkhorn. Sorry, I didn't mean to go there, but that was the last slide.
Very nice. Anyone from the board have any questions for the chief?
I know back there, you had a, when this place was first built, you had a little room for fitness, which has gone away due to need of space. Do you all still, are you still required to meet physical challenges in order to maintain to wear that badge?
No, there's, there's. There's a physical requirement to get in the door.
Right.
But once you're here, there's no, there's no physical requirement you have to meet beyond that.
Is that a standard? Meaning, does every department, once you get in, you're in, you can be totally unhealthy and run in a circle very fast, but not very much in a straight line, and you're still okay?
Yes. Now, there are departments that, there are places that incentive, that use incentives to get people to maintain health and physical fitness so that they stay in shape. And usually, that's how the standards, you know, come about. But no, to answer your question directly, we don't have a specific standard to say you've got to maintain certain body weight or anything like that.
A few pretty big muscle guys over there, I've seen them.
Oh, yeah.
They must be personally.
Yeah. And I would say, I mean, we've got some, there's some pretty big people, but they're all pretty agile.
Matt, one of the questions that I had, and it's helped me, we have during an existing patrol, if we were at full staff.
Yes.
We would have how many patrol officers during that given shift?
Full staff, you'd have a sergeant, and then he or she would have five officers working with them. So you have ideally six. Depending on the time of day and day of the week, you may have, and I'll just, you know, speak directly, right now, we have a patrol squad working, and I believe there's four people on. We're on Wednesday, so our street crimes unit is working their 12-hour shift, and they'll be working until midnight. So there is an additional four persons that are working that are available to respond to calls. So there you have, there would be 10 for today's shift. And we do that based on our call analysis, and we look at, you know, the busiest days. And we find that our busiest days primarily wind up being in the week. And you may think they'd be on the weekend, but they wind up being on weekdays.
I've seen, well, let me use this. New York City, I see two police officers in the car together. Does this make sense, or does it make sense for us?
In New York City, it's a.
Well, I'm just, because I know, I know that when we pull over a suspect, it seems as though we'll have backup behind them. I'm not sure if that's in all cases, but in most of the cases that I know that I view, it looks like that we have a backup showing up. Is that good, bad, or indifferent to have two people in a car? Or would it, help me understand. I'm just trying to understand.
Ideally, it'd be great to have two officers in every car. You would have a much safer situation. But I think the way we're set up now, and in the way policing has gone over the years, that one officer, and here in Elkhorn, there is pretty quick response for backup. If you're out in the county, for instance, a sheriff deputy or a trooper, oftentimes they have to wait for, and I've heard of examples where you have a guy out in Conawingo waiting for backup coming from Earlville. That's a long time to wait. We have the luxury of being able to place one person in a car. And if you're on a, if you're on suburban drive and you call for backup, somebody else might be over on Plasky Highway, and they're there within a minute. They might be in Buck Hill Farms, or even if they're coming from Bridge Street, they're going to be there relatively quick. And so I don't necessarily think that two officers to a car, you know, would be, it would be safer, and there's nothing wrong with safety. But, you know, the practice has been here, and really throughout the country, one officer to a car, and I said, we have the luxury of close backup.
Very good. So your backup would be essentially somebody in your department. It wouldn't be, let's say, the sheriff's department, somebody riding by, would they be able to pick that up and stop by just?
Absolutely. With our radio system the way it is now, everybody can monitor everybody else. So if you're out and you need backup, if I'm a deputy or a trooper, and I just happen to be in the area, I'm going to you. We, one thing that is probably still unique to Cecil County is we maintain an absolutely tremendous working relationship with our allied law enforcement partners that, for a number of different reasons, doesn't exist in all counties throughout the state. But it's one thing that we hear when we attend trainings throughout the state, that Cecil County still is, got a great working relationship. And I believe our folks have a lot to do with that, because we're willing to work with state police and sheriff's deputies.
Anyone else from the board have any questions about the presentation?
I just had one last slide. I know there have been a couple of questions, and one of them was the average time for an arrest. Very, kind of difficult to come up with a dead-on answer here, but one to three hours. All depends. I'll give you an example. I arrest you for disorderly conduct, it's a simple offense report, I can book you relatively quick, and my statement of probable cause and my charging document can be done relatively quick, and I get you over to court commissioner. If I'm not backed up over at the court commissioner, if I can just walk in and have you reviewed, I can do that in an hour, maybe hour and a half. Now, I change the scenario a little bit. I arrest you for DWI, driving while intoxicated, and find that you've got a firearm on you, drugs, and you're wanted on a warrant through the Elkhorn Police Department and maybe another police agency. Now, I have all different kinds of things to deal with. And I've got to process your evidence and get it into property, and do all the other paperwork. And my probable cause is much more extensive, because I have traffic charges and I also have criminal charges. Now, maybe I get over to court commissioner, and it's a Friday night or a Saturday night, and there's two deputies and a trooper ahead of me, and somebody from northeast, and now I've got to sit there and wait. Now, all of a sudden, I'm on three, four, maybe five hours. And then I've got to sit in front of court commissioner, and sometimes that takes, sometimes that can take a long time. So once an officer is out there, once he or she makes an arrest, they're tied up for a while. And there are definitely times, depending on call volume, that an officer's got to get up from doing their paperwork and go out and answer another call for service. Sometimes they come back with another arrest. It gets a little complicated at times. And our arrests for the year 2013 were 1,750. Our total incidents involving police were 31,977. And roughly, we're looking at, you know, 600 or plus or minus incidents per week that an officer's involved in, something that requires an officer's time. And let me be clear, these are not all 911 calls, not all calls for service. Some of these things are traffic stops, appearances in court, but they're all things that require a police officer's time, and they're not available to do other, to do other things. Citations, traffic citations, 5,297. And that was from July 1 of 2013 through June 30 of 2014. And just some of the challenges that face the department moving forward is, we saw recruitment and retention is always a challenge. Moving forward, there's certainly a need to look at an option for disability or retirement for officers. And of course, we talked about some need for a facility upgrade. And just a note on a facility upgrade, I'm not looking at that as, like Roy Schreider said in Jaws, we're going to need a bigger boat. That was kind of an immediate need right then and there, but I'm not saying it in that sense. I think it's probably important for us to look forward and realize that we are going to get to a point where we will need more space. And I don't think it's appropriate for me to discuss it here, but I've got some options in my mind of things that we may be able to look at. So that's my presentation. I hope that you all were satisfied, and I've answered questions that you had, and I hope that you're all satisfied, not just with my presentation, but with our service.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Can I get that PowerPoint email to me, because I'd like to keep that information?
That's good information.
Yeah.
Because it's really good.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. Yes.
Stand across. Probably have a couple more. The, I've talked to a couple people in the county EMS, that they've had a huge problem with their radio systems cutting out. Have you heard that? And it's, and also, do we have that problem?
Yes, I have heard it. And yes, we were subject to that issue. It was temporary on a day.
They're telling you that it's an ongoing problem for a long period of time, months and months and months, not something that's been isolated to a solar flare.
Yeah. I'm talking in reference to one day where there was just a complete system outage.
They're talking firefighters are going in, all of a sudden, their radios are cutting out, they can't hear each other, paramedics.
It is a problem. It is a problem for us. I don't know that we have it as extensively as some of the other agencies, because they, you know, go out further into the county and have areas where, you know, radio communications may be more difficult. But yeah, by all means, it is a problem. But it's my understanding that there may be some fixes coming in the not-too-distant future with upgrades to the radio system by Department of Emergency Services. And I know presently, they're in talks with a company called Sunguard to upgrade the computer aided dispatch system, as well as a records management system, which will direct, you know, have a direct impact on us. And what it also may do, and I know there's some concerns about folks calling 911, and it's kind of a belabored process to get a cop to come out, because you've got to answer a whole plethora of questions. But I understand that with the new system, that may be a common thing in the past, and it may be a bit of a smoother transition for a call taker to get information over to a dispatcher, and it may have to be a response by police.
This regressing back to the accreditation thing, it's been brought to me when I walked around town and knocking on doors. And I did my own research calling New Jersey and Virginia, and I've talked to a lot of different departments. And you're right, the initial cost, I'm estimating somewhere about $30,000. Then after that three-year period, it would drop down to about $4,200 as a revolting or a continuation. Also, your insurance, your insurance decrease to offset the majority of that cost. And then what I've found, at least talking to lieutenants, police chiefs, and just regular officers, that it created a consistent checks and balances, that an elected official, a new police chief, a new whomever couldn't come in, and all of a sudden, they have their room spin on it a certain way. It creates a continuity in the department that this is the way that it always is. And I believe, at least for me, being an employer and an employee, that when you have that constant thing, you know exactly what the rules are, that it creates a better work environment, and could help as far as retention of police officers, because now they're not worried about certain person thinking this, or that, or doing that. Am I off-target on that?
I'd like to think that we have a pretty tight situation right now, where somebody can walk in and, hey, here's our policy and procedure manual. One of the things that I have as a concern over accreditation would be that you are kind of tied into having to do things a certain way, when they may not necessarily be germane to how we want to do things here locally, where we're taking someone else's standards and saying, here, here's how you got to operate, and you're taking some flexibility away from the chief of police. And you may be taking discretionary power away from officers. And that's one of their greatest, one of their greatest tools is the power of discretion.
I haven't heard that.
Can I ask you a question? Who does the, whoever knows, I shouldn't. Who actually does the accreditation? Who? I'm sorry. Bolivia. And where are they from? Are they, I don't know much about.
I've never answered that question.
Are they now national?
They're, it's, yeah, the standards, you know, are, I believe, I know they're national, and they may even be international.
There's two different setups that they use, that they have, and chief of police, correct me if I'm wrong again, there's a system, for our size, there's 196 or 197 points that they make. These are the policies. Bigger organizations, there's 400 in some. And it is a long, detailed thing. When you get set up, it sets the bar, this is it, there's, there really is no deviation as far as policy and procedures, as far as being able to make, you know, decisions out in the field and everything. I haven't had anybody, everybody that I've talked to about it has liked it, some have loved it, some have only gone through it halfway.
Right.
And absolutely, like, we've got to this point and loved it, and we just not stopped.
Well, I've.
I haven't seen anybody go the other way.
Right. I think, you know, I don't know who you spoke with, and I've spoken with people, accreditation managers, who, you know, basically told us and some other members of our command staff that the juice isn't worth the squeeze, so to speak. So, and these are accreditation managers. So. So, it's why, I mean, if the board, if it's a sense of the board that we want to have a accredited police agency, I mean, hey, myself and other members of command staff, we're certainly capable of taking on that, what would be a challenge. And I'm not sure what they would find upon coming into our facility, if we would have to make upgrades or not. I simply don't know that. One, one suggestion that I would make, and if there's a, if there's a concern of the board regarding our policy and procedure manual, I would suggest that for about a third of the cost, that I take our policy and procedure manual, much like you're going to do with the town charter, where you're going to have it, I guess, codify or recodify and you're going to have council look at it. I could do the same thing with our policy and procedure manual and take it in front of our LEOVR attorney, law enforcement officer's bill of rights attorney, who not only specializes in LEOVR, but specializes in writing policies for police departments. And I could do it for a third of the cost and.
Bolton.
Yes, Bolton, Bolton. And, and in fact, with regards to cost, I would just use funds available to me through the Cecil County Drug Task Force and it wouldn't cost taxpayers any money. And I think that would be, I think something that probably should be done anyway, just because our policy manual has been around, we've kept it updated over the years, but it hasn't had eyes laid on it necessarily from a cover to cover.
That could be in the first step.
But I've, I'd like to think that our, I'd like to think that our manual's pretty tight. There, there's no real science to creating policy and procedure. In law enforcement, you're essentially picking up the phone or shooting somebody an email and saying, I need a policy on what you do with guns when you take them in the evidence. Send me your policy. And there you got it and you kind of recraft it to fit the figure situation. But, you know, I've, I looked at the accreditation narrowly to the, to the cost aspect of it. I did have some conversation with some folks in different agencies and like I said, some people love it and I've had some people tell me, like I said, the juice necessarily not worth the squeeze.
Is that why Chief Ryan, because I know Chief Ryan had put you on that at one time.
Yeah, he did.
Backed away from it.
Yes.
Any other questions, Steve?
No.
Mr. Lemon, I think you were, went and asked a question back there.
No, I just want to compliment you on your well-organized, informed presentation. I know it took a lot of work to put that together, but you should be complimenting that. That's very good.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm glad to come and share the information, not just with the board, but with the citizens. And I think it's important. I admit, Mr. Lemon, coming from you, it certainly means a lot. It really does.
You might want to look into drones because that, you can sit there in the office and have all this stuff floating around and you can see everything.
Right.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Do we have any K9s in town, please, Portia?
Yes, sir, we do. We have, we have one K9 unit. The K9's name is Rommel and he's handled by Officer First Class Matt Nussel.
So, I'm sure if you need eight officers, wouldn't it be better to off, put some more K9s on? They can do the job with five officers, one dog can't.
Yeah, unfortunately.
If you set up a Hinesworth mine with one dog, he'll keep everybody away. Hey, that way you don't need backup. You got him.
That's a, that's a good comment.
It don't cost eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year.
Second dog in Rising Sun. Well, they meant something to take a look at.
Yeah, well, hey, we'll, we'll take another dog. Unfortunately, unfortunately, dogs can't write and they can't write probable causes and they can't physically make arrests, so kind of.
What would it mean, what would it mean, like, when something goes down in Hinesworth Mine, you've got six cop cars going down there.
Right.
You don't need them, you've got one dog, one car. A dog will take care of the rest of them.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
You know, that point's well taken because officer there is right over there.
Sorry, I've got dogs, they're job flies.
The people want to argue with the police, but take that one dog, they're gone.
Yeah, yeah. It has, has an effect.
Take a hundred people, guarantee you ninety-nine percent I'm afraid of dogs.
Absolutely.
Very good. Chief, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And I'd like to invite Mr. Dan Hanley up here from Public Works to talk to us a little bit about the Public Works Department. Come on up here, sir.
We've got a follow-up, we have just been here.
I should have put that. It wouldn't have mattered.
You gotta put.
Point three, treason base, you know, so they have to.
It'll be quicker, I guarantee you, it'll be quicker.
We're going to take, as, as you're handing out, that we're going to take a, kind of, two, three, four minute break, real quick. And listen, if anyone would like a sandwich, grab a sandwich up there during this quick break.
A sandwich?
Yeah, grab yourself a sandwich.
You can have mine, or.
You know, I was thinking about asking for it. With hand food.
Take a second.
This is a nice one.
You should have one, you should have one person bagging it.
So, you guys.
So, like an accent.
So, like an accent.
So, like an accent.
So, like an accent.
I didn't know very often.
All right, we got, all right, we got the show back? All right, very good. All right, Dan, you're on, I'd like to get everyone's attention again, we're going to start back off the next of this meeting.
Talk amongst yourselves.
All right, Dan, lay it on us. Give us an overview is what I ask for and that's all we need.
Basically, oh, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Basically, what you have in front of you is the overview of how the Department of Public Works functions. Currently, we have thirty-one full-time employees broken down into eleven subdivisions, which you can see on your front page. And you can tell I've got the full-time people, the ones listed in the white, I've got the one, part-time seasonal ones, which I'll list in a couple of weeks, they're the ones in the shaded. And I've also got some vacant positions where I think we need to be, those are the ones in the solid grade. I'll touch on that as we go into the further sheets, but that's, that's kind of what we're looking at right now at this moment. So, this is what we have, this is how we're presently constructed. To see where you're going now, you've got to see where you've been. And if you go to page two, this is where, when I took over this job a couple of years ago, I heard we, you know, Department of Public Works did this, they did that, it was amazing what they did, it kind of shocked me. So, if you go back from ninety-eight to two thousand thirteen, you've got a population of the town itself and then you've got the, the staffing. And the staffing went, you know, we started at nineteen people back in ninety-eight, got to as high as forty people in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, then it was cut back to, we'll have to go with twenty-seven people. Been authorized to have thirty-three since then and we've been slowly trying to get up to that number, thirty-three, because it's been on hold for different reasons and all that stuff. So, that's the reason why at one time you did have forty people. Currently, I'm looking at thirty-one full-time. The other thing I'm trying to do to save money also in two thousand fourteen is I'm planning to utilize two part-time people to make up for one person and on one person shows, trying to fill that position. The other thing which is also not referenced on here and I don't know how to trace it back, each got seasonal people, which were part of these people as well, additional cutting grass and all that scenario, but they're, they're not including this number itself. Some years they had, some years they didn't. So, that's why I had to kind of limit to what I had. So, that's kind of where we're at, you can tell where we started and where we've been. So, now if we go to the third page, and this is where I think we need to concentrate on, this is an objective the mayor all warrants and I'm very happy this is objective, but I just want to reemphasize to the board, yard waste. That's why, if we get down to yard waste, we'll get to that and you'll see what a burden it is for my department. But as you go down the numbers, you know, we've got a water crew, which, you know, do outstanding work. We have seventy-five eight point eight miles of water mains around here we need to maintain. We have five hundred and seventy-eight hydrants. We get over six thousand, sixty-seven hundred water customer account people. Respect the sewer, we've got thirteen pumping stations, which we clean and inspect every month. We have like forty-three point three miles of storm drains and we have sixty-eight miles of sewer mains. So, you can tell, it's a lot of things we need to keep track of.
Dan, real quickly, does the storm drains clean themselves or do you actually pull?
We'll check them out, we try to do it, like a lot of times if they jam up, we'll camera them to see if there's a leak, if there's a breach in them, we can do the camera in there to see what's going on with it, to see if there's something in between. So, that's.
Get enough full leaves to degrade it.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, there's, there's a storm drain now, which is right off, I know it's Bridge Street, which, you know, it's the state, but we try to help them out that way, that's the one that keeps fighting up. So, something else. Respect the grass, we've got three parks and we cut probably about thirty acres per week, you can tell it's a lot of grass we do cut. When it comes to street and concrete, we have over forty-five miles of roads in this town. We have one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight catch basins, that's huge. We have an awful lot of catch basins. For stormwater management, we manage over twenty-one ponds, which are managed by DPW, which we took over, which is what it is. Yard waste is one we'll touch on. So far this year, as of the end of July, we've, we've collected four hundred and thirty-five point eight tons of yard waste. Last year, we had like six hundred and eighty-six tons of yard waste, so. Typically, you go through forty-six people to collect the stuff. I mean, look what happened last night, you got four inches of rain, so I couldn't even touch the stuff today. So, when it dries out, you're talking another four, six, could be many, seven people just to go collect the stuff out. Last month, I mean, from April till June, we collected just about twenty-five hundred man-hours. That is an awful lot. Again, I know, I know your initiative, you know, we talked about waste management, collecting it, we talked about the service, but that, that is a lot for this department. Because if you look at the amount we spend versus who's available, the guys in the middle of town services, the ones available to do the work, that's the whole department. If you collect them all doing that, you can't do anything else. You can't grub, you can't paint, you can't do the old thing. So, that's why my, my department's kind of handcuffed by this itself, so. And it's just also want to touch, when it comes to snow removal, which is a popular thing, especially in August, you need about fifteen people for every twelve-hour shift, that's how it comes down to. We're breaking down into five routes, sorry, six routes and then I've got mechanics, so you do need a fair amount of people to remove the snow. We are pretty good removing snow in this town. Why I see this department going is I like to be more proactive and you need to maintain the infrastructure, you need to be less reactive and there's a lot of reactivity. We have a bunch of future projects we're touching on now, we've got the AD sidewalk review where you have to see eventually like where's that town, you put ramps, it's a long, arduous process, we'll start in that. We've got our favorite whip, the watershed implementation plan tying back with the stormwater management ponds. You've got some in situ water meter inspections, we're in the process of starting with the next month or two. And in long term, we're looking at doing some water valve exercise and keep the infrastructure going. Again, I want to stress, we've got to keep the infrastructure, we have to keep that rolling because if the infrastructure goes, all it takes is, you know, watch it, watch it, water main break on Main Street, watch how fast that thing goes. Your system's getting older and we exercise as best we can, but you also need the capability to come up and repair it, you also need that process of slowly maintaining it as, as we go that way. So, again, I keep going back to yard waste, but I have to. Again, yard waste is a nice service, but your reward and your store, that's an entitlement for the residents of the town. You've got to sort of separate the two.
That one comment.
Yeah.
About the yard waste.
Sure.
And I commend the public work, the work that they're doing. And I always see them and tell them of what a great job they're doing. The only thing that bothers me was if the mayor cuts his grass on Tuesday and puts his stuff out, I cut mine on Thursday, trucks coming by on Wednesday, picks it up, mine is back there on Thursday, sits the next, next couple of days, whatever. Somewhere in the future, I would love to see a truck coming by and just stop and pick it up regardless of what day it is or what, who cut first, whatever, because not everybody's going to do the yard waste.
I understand that, right, right. The problem we have, I'm a little.
Wait, wait, before you say it, here, the problem, we understand the problem is, when I see a truck goes by, looks at yard waste, all right, a couple of minutes to pick that up, wouldn't hurt to stop and pick it up, just so they're going fast, coming back fast and then saying, oh, you didn't have it on Wednesday. That's my point of view.
We have, we have a lot of volume, that's why, it's a lot of volume. That's the Thursday route, you know, it's, it's almost like the Frisky's buffet, remember all the cats lined up and you start with one cat, bounces around? What happens is if you miss a day, it backs everything up. So, just trying to keep on top of everything else, keeping the top of routes as best we can. I'd love to have trucks drive around all the time, unfortunately, because of the volume we pick up, you know, you're talking, what, over one point three million pounds, that's a lot. So, just to keep on top of it and to ship it where it needs to be, so it's, it's quite an adventure to do it that way.
I think that's where waste management, they were wanting to have a sixty, one of those sixty gallon cars. You put it in there and that way, you could put it in anytime you wanted.
Exactly.
But then on a certain day, then it'll go out, it'll be picked up.
Just like your truck.
Just like that. And that way, if I, no matter what day you cut it, or cut this on a certain day, put it in the thing, but it always goes out on that certain day, then keep consistently with, because you're into that with waste waste management, if you go that way, it's also restrict, you know, route, how you do it.
But we haven't seen any, any pricing or.
Yeah, I think if programs.
But if I hear something, I'll let you know, trust me.
We haven't seen any pricing or.
No, no. Dan, what did you just say?
No, no, I agree, as soon as I get back to pricing, if I hear something, I'll let you know. No, that's fine.
I'll send in something more.
Oh, sure. But that's, that's where we kind of need to be. In other words, we concentrate, you know, we're very reactive, we need to be proactive in the longer term, keep tabs of the infrastructure. So, best way of doing that is, again, you know, you've got the number of people, I can talk about the people, but if I could reallocate them, as we're talking at the beginning, reallocate them, we can take them to different areas. Because we've got catch basin maintenance and we've got street maintenance, we just had the presentation earlier today. I love to sort of tie the two things together and maintain them, but unfortunately, I can't because I keep going back to the, you know, the immediate needs, I'm trying to go forward that way.
Did we at one time have approved just specifically for catch basin maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Can you, has the town ever looked at contracting grass cutting?
Yeah, we did. It was over a hundred thousand on, one time we looked at it. It was real, real, real expensive, so we found it. Not lately, but.
Yeah, we're attempting to take care of the Chapel Row Pond, we're halfway done cutting it down until the weather got in the way, but to have a contractor cut that, it was about, it was a good price. it was about, it was a good price, and I think it was about twelve to thirteen grand just to cut it once. And when the process is done, we actually rented the, well, the skid steer with the hedge hole, just to rip most of it out, so we got most of it ripped out, when the weather cooperates, we need to go finish the area, but to do it work is, it's, it's pretty pricey. As director, I always try to weigh out, do I contract it out versus doing it anyhow? And I try to do the best I can, so sometimes it makes sense, sometimes it doesn't, and that's why, this is a paper book, as well.
And I think that, if I remember correctly, when Sidney made his presentation during the, the, the grass side of things, he mentioned that is, there's gonna be some new regulations.
That's whip, yes.
In regards to the stormwater management ponds. And I, I guess, you know, my goal, and I think all of our goals, was to cut the stormwater management ponds twice a month, and here we cut them once every two months if we get to them.
Right.
And, you know, that's certainly unacceptable for, for all of us, and, and I absolutely agree, you're, you're, you're jammed up and you're, there's just not enough bodies. There's just not enough bodies, and I, I think it's pretty evident.
I want to grow, but I'm gonna grow smart, that's the whole thing, you know, allocates, you know, I don't want to throw a number out there, it's here it goes, you keep growing, you know, in the right way, that's what I like to do.
There was, well, no, I, I had a, a question, I saw Mark Desvado just come back into the room, and it actually spoke to me the other day, and we had, when, when we move forward to do some of our tasks, and, and, you know, once again, we reacted to, to weeding, scrubbing, spraying, and tickled to death about it, but we reacted, and one of the thoughts that he came up with, and I thought was a very viable thought, and something that our board needs to look at in the future, is, you know, some, some communities have, some municipalities have like small gators, like a, like a John Deere gator, or a, with, with the back end of the truck, and I, and I thought we had one at, you know, the Public Works at one time, but maybe we didn't. But you put a, if you can imagine putting a two-hundred-and-fifty-gallon.
Bird?
Unit in the back of it, that you could put your, with your sprayer, a hundred-foot sprayer in the back of it, you could have one guy drive that, and they came in at six in the morning before we're, we're really busy in the town, that person could walk both sides of the street, hitting that weeds, the crackway, and then when he gets tired of walking, you let the other guy drive for just a little bit, and hope he doesn't go a little faster for it. But I think that's the thinking outside the box, and I'm not sure if, if, if that situation can even be played into the stormwater management bonds, because I don't know if you can actually spray a nose, and I, and I'm a little, you know, I don't really know about that. And I guess the third thing, as we're talking about spraying, do we have to be licensed?
Not if, not if you're doing, what we spray is Roundup. If it's not stronger than Roundup, you're okay.
If, if we need to go with something stronger, do we have to have a licensed sprayer?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I actually looked in about two years ago with the, with the county, they have a licensed sprayer, so it was local, but because of his rates, and I found out we were spraying, we were okay with it.
I know every golf course has a licensed sprayer, because of the, the runoffs, and I, I always wondered that, because I, I think that might be maybe some certifications we should look at, because I know some areas, we might be able to put that round pillar on it, maybe make some headway, but I don't know if we can or can't, just kind of throwing that out there. Any, any other questions from the board? Or any questions, I guess?
The vacant dump blocks.
Yes.
Are budgeted employees that we just haven't hired?
No, not at the moment. If you go back.
So they're, they're not budgeted?
No.
So we don't have the money for them?
Right.
Okay, got it.
Got it. That's why I like to do a two-fold, you know, two-fold approach, see what you can do, then see if you can consolidate, and if anything wants, then evaluate. The way, the way, if you go back to my organization chart, the, the people to the left, the water service, sewer maintenance, and the infrastructure coordinator, they're the ones, they're the ones, you know, middle-of-the-night calls, they're the ones to take care of all the water leaks and all that stuff, so they're the ones that constantly on call, they, they do a very good job, in fact, sometimes a phenomenal job, because some of the situations out there, it gets, it gets kind of ugly. And the people to the right, well, also, they're also like, help them out occasionally, but the ones to the left, they're the ones that, no, they're, they're the ones, they're the ones that depend on them, they're the ones middle-of-the-night, damn, they'll look at the call, so. Believe me, if they, if they weren't as talented as they were, you'd need even more literally, but.
And you gotta keep in mind that a lot of times, depending more that, where you have a water main failure, you may need people for support, all, all trucks, for traffic control, or anything else, you're gonna have, you know, six or seven people out there, one main, not just one, or three.
We always got, that's, you know, the good thing in this town, which is, is great, is the tractor truck. The tractor truck itself, what we do is when we, you know, we bring them up to water leaks, because they'll actually do a hydro excavation, because of that, that's where we find all the utilities, and I don't think, I've been here, I think no utilities have been hit as far as I know, so. That's all it takes, see one of those, see, you know, in fact, we've had situations where electric lines have been marked wrong, we've actually found them, it's like, you know, it's always interesting, so.
Where, I think, you have maintenance, like people that fix the police cars.
Oh, yeah, fleet maintenance, right there, the last three, fleet maintenance.
The door.
Yes.
And I think I, when I met with you the one day, we, we talked a little bit about maintenance in general, and, and I know that you sent me a list of how much equipment that these guys look at. And it's, my gosh, it was a hundred and eighty-something pieces of equipment without even the police cars adding into it. And I, I always, I, I kind of felt myself around a little bit to find out, did, do we feel as though we're getting the, I, I felt maybe it would be a quicker, help the whole group if we could subcontract, I don't use the word subcontract, like oil changes and, and repairs, you, you run your public works cars, go up through the Jiffy Lube, we'll land a contract for, for forty dollars, whether it's a Jiffy Lube, or Williams Lube, or the new lube that's gonna be at the Ramsey Ford, you negotiate a deal, you run them up through there, but once again, I don't know if that's a savings to us or not. I was trying to take some burden.
Sure.
Not trying to take away work from any of those guys, but that's always an option, I just want to let you know, if that's something that you ever thought that was the right thing to do, bring it to this group, and, and we'll make decisions on that.
I tried to, I tried to my fleet guys, like, you know, they'll do things in-house, and it's too much, they'll, they'll send it out to see what's what. It runs in, for these guys, it's ebbs and flows, sometimes they'll get, you know, normal, then they'll get slammed, then normal, then they get slammed. They're very good, especially around a snowstorm, that's where they're phenomenal, again, these guys right there, because it was two at a time, because when you hit, you gotta fly.
They do a good job.
Because right now, because right now, the way my department's made, I have no, I have no extra people, so if something goes down, areas will get plowed, so.
As I've always said, public works, in my view, is our frontline people. They, they are our ambassadors. They're everywhere, everyone sees them, and in fact, they're probably more in the, in the looking glass more so than anybody, and I think it's, they need to be aware of that all the time, too, of course, and.
That's good and bad.
It is good and bad, and, you know, you just need to let us know what tools that's needed to make them, or help them do their job, the way that they want to do the job.
Dan, has, has staff asked you about the vending machine down at the soda machine? The soda machine not working down there?
We're probably, a couple of weeks from me to fix, yes.
Before I'm working. I was down there, and I was just wondering if there's anywhere we can get that up and running.
Probably.
No, privately owned, yes.
Yeah, please, we would fix it with the police.
Sorry, it means privately owned, but it's not working, so.
It means we own it. No, if I, if, if, how can I word this? If I, if I had, if I had the funds, it'd be fixed right away, we're slowly billing the funds. The funds kind of went to the Christmas party, so that's the history behind it. We would save up the money, and then go up, push the Christmas party, and that guy would kind of lose out, so. Yes, we bought it.
There's vending machines that you can rent, like even Pepsi or anyone else, that rent them, they come stock them, and you actually get money back from.
We, we, we've researched that one, like the ones here, you don't get any money back, you just run them, and that's it, so. There's no kickback.
I have my boys and girls club, and we get, it might not be a lot, it might be seventeen dollars a month, but it's still money.
I think they'll take it up.
You get money back, too.
You have to do, you always have to, you know that.
There you could put, listen, it's no, it's no cost to us at the town, that you could put, you know, cracker machines, you could even put sandwich machines, it really wouldn't bother me one way or the other, and I know that they will.
Use it.
Yeah.
That's the reason we bring it up, is it's a service for the.
Very good. Any.
Seven, seven every time you start around. Yeah, I stopped seven, because you have your own stuff there, it's your own money.
Ms. Pat Oaken?
Dan.
Yes.
I have a quick question. Delmarfa Power is apparently putting new, I guess it's Delmarfa, they're putting lines under, you got, you got an arch fence, too? Yeah. I have two of them. But anyway, my question is, why are they digging up our, in our water line?
I know they're running, I do.
I know where the line's running, because I saw the whip ditch come down, I know, and it's, but my water meter from where they're digging, say, here's where they're digging. My water meter's over here on the curb, and they dug it up, they dug down, and the lid's loose, but I figured I could fix that myself.
Oh.
And I'm just curious as to why are they, they're digging everybody's one, everybody, I saw that. And I wanted to know why. I mean, I don't understand, because I'm not fixing my water pipe again, if they broke anything in there.
I'm not exactly sure, I can research it and find out, because I think you have to do, I, I know the water line itself runs from the curb to the, to the, to the, to the curb, I know that, exactly, I know that, so.